This is Mark McFerrin. We'll start the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today is August 19th at 7:02. We'll call the meeting to order. First item is delegations. If anyone would like to speak to the Board of Selectmen on any items this evening. You can raise your hand. We'll unmute you or unmute yourself or jump into the chat and let us know that you'd like to speak. Anyone? Anyone? Oh, I don't know. Let's see. You are muted yourself there.
There you go. How does that sound?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Name an address for the record.
Great, thanks. This is Kathy Cassidy. I live at 14 Rockwood Drive in Waterford, Connecticut. However, I do own and pay taxes in the town of East Line, and that is at 488 Main Street. And I am also here as a board member of the East Line Public Trust Foundation. So I'm just curious as to the reason why this was, this meeting was called on such a short notice.
Okay. Anyone else? We don't answer questions at delegations. You can, you can pose statements.
Okay. Thank you. My first time on one of your meetings.
No problem. Oh, I know that Kathy. So, yeah, we don't, we don't respond to questions and get into a debate at delegations. We can answer questions during the regular time of the meeting. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on to our meeting. It's discussion, discussion of possible action, the allocation of FEMA funds to the public safety project. Currently, the funds are at $1,730,607.61. So there is a, obviously, this project's been going on for quite a while. We've been struggling on how to pay for the difference of what was appropriated than the million dollars that was promised and then the difference in that. And, and we're sitting out here today with FEMA funding coming back to the town to use, we use at our discretion. And, and that's what this meeting's all about, is the appropriation of the $1.7 million. Paul, you, Mr. Dagel, you're chair of the Vision Committee. We had had multiple discussions on the project itself, and, and we're at a point now where this $1.7 million, we're asking to be allocated, or appropriated, I should say. But we had some other questions. I mean, there's been, there's been a lot said that the details, oh my God, a year and a half of details haven't been presented publicly and questions weren't answered. And a lot of political play is being made on that. So Paul, for the second time, I know, I know you've answered many of these questions already in, in the Vision Committee. Some members were present, members in the public. So I know you have some prepared things that you want to get out on the record, that we're cleaning some things up. You're muted, Paul. So, and you have to unmute yourself.
Thank you.
You got it.
Appreciate it. So, yeah, I just want to review in general terms, some information that was provided during the last Board of Finance meeting and make a commitment on going forward. Final cost numbers can't be determined at this time pending our action on the use of the FEMA funds from a financing standpoint. But independent of that decision, I did a comparison of the project costs submitted by the Vision Committee and Silver Petricelli and the comparison of the finance, project costs that was submitted as evidence at the Board of Finance meeting. I will let you know without getting into great detail, there was a slight adjustment made to both numbers regarding what I presented and what was presented to the Board of Selectmen at our meeting. There was $6,670 that was not included in that $7.17 million project cost. The two items that were not included was the asbestos inspection for $1,670 and the $5,000 worth of furniture that the police department, with the consent of the town, used to purchase some furniture for the building based on that furniture being on sale. That information was not provided to Silver Petricelli and was not included in their, their total amount. So that brings their total amount to $7,186,235. That's well, that is still within the 7.2 million that we have discussed and had previously moved forward to the Board of Finance. But it is a slight adjustment of $6,670. The Board of Finance information that was entered into the record was overstated by $5,839 and it was understated by $3,000. Specifically, the cost for the bid off for the elevator cab was listed at $198,000 and the actual bid off price from the, submitted by the bid was $201,051. Bottom line, those values of what was presented at the Board of Finance and the modified S and P number is within $2,200 of each other. So in my opinion, the 7.2 million is, is an accurate cost for executing the project. The next area that, that was partially addressed by Anna in that presentation regarding the financial costs for bonding of the 7.2 million was included in that meeting. It, Anna did some calculations and it came up to the total bonding cost. Anna was 9.7 million, I believe, looking at the meeting minutes to borrow the 7.2. The short-term borrowing numbers was not included in the presentation and Anna and I've had a discussion and we planned to break out all the financial costs and how much we borrow will drive what that number is pending our action tonight. So the plan moving forward is when we have the final number that we are going to borrow for the project, we will present at the Board of Finance meeting the actual short-term and bonding costs above and beyond the amount of money we bond. The second area that wasn't clearly presented during the Board of Finance meeting was the operating costs for the building, specifically electricity and propane and what the town has paid for the building that we've owned since last May to date. And then I'll work with Anna to come up with a forecast based on those utility costs, which we consider to be operating costs until we actually occupy the building once we get under contract. So we'll come up with a rest estimate so we, the taxpayers understand what, what we'll be paying at that time. The third area is future CNRE costs. There's been quite a bit of discussion about not replacing both air handling units, not replacing the roof and not replacing the parking lot. We will break those numbers out, put them aside. We have those numbers. They, we have estimates from Silver Petricelli. And those will be future costs. There'll be future maintenance costs. And I will walk through the rationale for why we don't think it's the right thing to, to borrow money to execute those, those portions, those replacements at this time. Those, all three of those things still have life left in them. They're not failed. They have between a five and a 10-year lifespan before they will need to be replaced. And to borrow money against that and pay interest for 20-year bonding doesn't make financial sense. Also, not doing them at this time gives us the opportunity for applying low-sit money in the future to cover those costs or to have the town put money aside into our CNRE account to actually pay, you know, pay for them right, right up by financing those costs. So I'll present and address those items.
A lot was said, Paul, or some of those exaggerated phantom numbers that the Board of Finance was putting out, were based off of the original presentation by the architect, which was a renovate-as-new project. And I just want to stop you for a second and thank you for letting me butt in here. A renovated-as-new project was taking the entire building and really making it brand new. We were never planning on that. Remember, the schools were going to be renovated as new and that price tag was going to be an $85 million price tag to renovate the schools as new. The town chose not to go in that direction but to renovate the schools as much as appropriate for $38 million and hold capital projects at bay that will be done later. For an example, we just spent this $38 million and we're still going out to bond for the $38 million. There's a new roof that's going to be needed at the Niantic Center School in the next couple of years. The school, the Board of Ed plans on bringing that forward next year to us for financing. This is a school we just dumped $12 million into. We knew that we weren't going to be building the entire school brand new over again, that there would be capital needs in the future. We admit that that's the case here. We admit that someday that parking lot would have to be redone, but what's there now is a crack seal and a, a project where you blacktop it with a crack seal. That's all. We're not planning on digging it up. The original renovate-as-new called for tearing up the asphalt, re-grading it, putting in new storm drains. None of that is on the table nor is it going to be on the table. That was kind of a wishful thinking if we were to do everything brand new. So they took that price tag and blew it up, that all this stuff was needed and that was going to be the actual cost. That's far from the truth. The truth is $7.2 million is what we need. And yes, it's a building the town owns. And yes, capital projects will be needed in the future. We already own the building. So yes, there's electric bills that are being paid right now and propane bills and, and security bills and all the other things that might come up. We, we own this building. We have Parks and Rec going out there, cutting the grass. That's a fact. So, and, and so I wanted to stop there, just remind people that, you know, there was talk about this canopy, this grandiose vision of a canopy over the parking lot. That wasn't part of the plan nor is it part of the plan nor will it be part of the plan. It's not a future capital item. It's not an operating cost and it's not something part of this project. So to inflate the plan, to inflate the numbers, to exaggerate that is inappropriate and certainly not truthful. So I wanted to make sure we, we were very clear on the fact that the plan we have is a plan we have and it will last. You know, we have an air handler up on the roof that is far newer than some of the air handlers on Board of Ed buildings. So we're not going to replace an air handler that works. And we, we, our architects have gone on record saying that's good for another five years with good maintenance. The roof that we are going to reseal as part of the project is good for another 10 years plus. You're not going to rip a roof off a building now if it's good for another 10 years. That'd be, we don't do that in the municipal world. We use it right to the end. So, you know, we, we finished a school two years ago and we're already talking about putting a roof on one of the schools. So yes, there's capital projects in the future. This is a building that will need that kind of upkeep. It's a 30,000 square foot building. It's going to need upkeep and, and capital projects. And depending on what we put on the second floor, it's going to need money to, to outfit the second floor. We always talked about that. We never said we were going to renovate the whole 30,000 square feet. That was also said and also part of the record that, that future cost of that building. Depending on what the town decides to do a couple of years out, whether we make it office space, storage space, meeting space, community group space, rental space, that's what will determine what the cost is to renovate the upstairs. Right now, it's going to be left vacant and therefore no money will be put into it. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome. So that, that was, that was addressing the related costs that was presented at the Board of Finance meeting. The third category was a list of items that were labeled as being omitted from the project. And those items, I will plan on going over one by one.
Thank you.
If we go back in front of the, the Board of Finance. There's a couple of items in there that are already in the base bid and don't need to be counted twice. And there's other items that are not required because it's been determined that they're not needed for the project. And none of them, none of those items, which totaled $850,000, affect the operability of the building nor do they represent the need for future dollars to, to quote, put them into the building. So I've had a discussion with the Chair, Chairman of the Board of Finance. I've committed to, to prevent, present that information accordingly. Things that were not included in the project have previously been discussed and addressed in the Vision Committee meetings, voted on by the Vision Committee. They have not been, they've not been held back from the public. But in, in respect to the Board of Finance, I, I plan on addressing all of them when we go back in front of the Board of Finance pending our action this evening. So transparency has been the goal of the Vision Committee from the beginning. At the project costs, I've been transparent. The related costs, we'll work, we'll work to categorize those. The related finance costs that were presented at the Board of Finance only represented one or two years. It didn't resent, didn't represent the full financial cost of the bonding. Anna has that information. She provided it when asked during the Board of Finance meeting. And that's subject to change based on our action tonight on the FEMA money. So in the, in the measure, in the attempt to, to reach common ground on, on the facts, the project costs, the related costs, I, I think we, we owe that to the Board of Finance and we owe it to the residents of East Line so that we can make our final decision on moving forward with this project. And I want to thank Anna for having some preliminary discussions with me and Anne Santoro as well. And all that information that was submitted to the Board of Finance as part of the record, I will be prepared to, to address with the Board of Finance. So there is one other thing I'd like just to open to general discussion. There was a public comment about potentially delaying the Sally Port and cells and doing that two, three, four years down the road with money from the sale of the, of the current Main Street building. My thoughts on that, and we'll see how the rest of the board feels, is two, every year that we, we continue not to have that, we'll be paying $48,000 plus to Waterford. So the cost of the Sally Ports, if you will, not in the next year, because it's going to take us about a year to finish this project once we get the authorization to start. But every year afterwards that we delay the Sally Port and detention cells, we're going to be spending about another $50,000 renting the facilities at, at Waterford. So that'll be a cost that'll be added on to the construction costs of the Sally Port and detention cells. And two years from now, three years from now, the cost that we have in our bid may be higher. Bonding rate for that amount of money, the 800-plus thousand dollars to put those in, the bonding rates could be higher at that time as well. And we lose the efficiency of our police department to operate in their own house, not having to go back and forth to Waterford if they need to detain any arrested personnel. So I think it was a good item that, that was opened up for discussion. My personal feeling is to delay that gives us a public safety building that doesn't meet the intent of a fully operational police department. And my recommendation is that we would move forward and keep the Sally Port and detention cells in for those reasons. Continued rent payment to Waterford and unknown inflation of construction costs and potential and, you're right, I can't predict if bonding costs will be higher two, three, four years from now. They could be lower.
Yeah, but my.
It's an unknown. But anyways, that's my point of view and I welcome comments from the rest of the Board of Selectmen on that subject.
Any questions for Paul for what he presented on behalf of the Vision Committee and, you know, his lead in that, which has been immense? Any questions for the Board of Selectmen? Roseanne, I think I have you muted and I can't unmute you. So you have to mute yourself. Star six will unmute you, Roseanne. This is a new version of Zoom that I can't control everything. We had, there you go. 705-2876, is that you, Roseanne?
It is.
All right. Nice to have you.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure your phone, you knew that your phone was muted so that we could include you in any conversations. Dan, you're on, oh, Dan, I may have accidentally just muted you and I can't unmute you. So star six, Dan, if you want to unmute yourself. Are there any questions?
There you go. Paul, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So if I may, I first want to say, Paul, I appreciate very much the work you've done in your presentation tonight and getting ready for the Board of Finance meeting. I think it's what's been requested. It's respectful of the public that is still trying to formulate an opinion on this project. It's respectful of the Board of Finance and what they've requested. I think this is what we needed to do. I appreciate that you've put in all this work. I still support doing the full project, doing the holding cells. If we're going to do it, we really need to do it right. We've had, I don't want to call it a windfall, but we've had the benefit of this FEMA money. It alleviates some of the pressure for financing, bonding out into the future. It, it alleviates some of that problem. I think the transparency that you've shown tonight and, and explaining this hopefully alleviates some of the concerns that the Board of Finance had with being truthful and upfront with this project. So I'm all for going forward with it, making this presentation to the Board of Finance as, as you have outlined it. And I'm hopeful that they will be receptive to this project. I truly believe there's no better alternative. And I don't have any political motive in supporting it. My only motive is that I truly believe it's right and what's best for the town. And so I hope we can move forward in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I, I know that Anna has something to share with us about the financing and some money that, you know, they're, they're, they're looking over the funding and then some of the funds that we use for the boardwalk have to be paid back through our capital projects plan. So Anna, you gave me some details about 20 minutes ago on the phone. I know we're kind of scrambling a little bit. Do you want to try to update us a little bit on this?
So I, myself and Bill Shear have been working on reviewing the FEMA storm records. And it is our determination that $203,560.89 was earmarked to be a part of the $4.4 million appropriation that was approved in 2014. What happened is during the FEMA application process, the, that was what we were expected to get for the Sandy storm. And as time was going on and the town had a meeting with FEMA representatives, it was determined that we would be eligible for more funding because we built the, the boardwalk to future mitigation, you know, hazards. And, and that's why it ended up being $836,000 instead of the $203,000 original estimate. This has been going on since, you know, over six years and we are finally getting the information from FEMA that we have been approved for the funds. So instead of $1.7 million being eligible to appropriate for the, this project, it's more to the tune of $1.5 million.
Do you have an exact figure? 04672?
Yes.
Okay. There's, there's a bit of a deficit running in that capital projects account that we, you know, knowing that we were going to have some FEMA funds for the boardwalk. You know, this, this 1.7 wasn't for the boardwalk. This, this was for all sorts of public works, recovery projects, for a road that buckled in our town, for storm drain issues that we had. Some of it was for the boardwalk. But this $200,000 some odd dollars is owed back to the capital plan that we borrowed against to finish the boardwalk. So it was kind of news to me as it was coming up. I wasn't, I think none of us, well, Roseanne was obviously here, but, because she's been here for 30-plus years. But, but, you know, I, the financing of this, rebuilding the boardwalk was creative. I mean, it was insurance money and the lawsuit money. Yes, the Public Trust donated some money and we also had some, some of this money, some of the project money that was left over. So there you go. So, so we have 1.52704672 available in the FEMA fund to appropriate to move forward with the police station. Other questions for Anna on that matter? I had a thousand of them when I first heard this. But, but there is a, there's, there is a deficit over there that we have to plug that hole, knowing that we were having FEMA funds eventually sent to us.
And a question I have for Anna. Anna, you and Bill Shear, have you spoken with anyone at FEMA at the state to make sure that this is the only amount of money that we have to set aside for anything that actually had to do with the both storms?
As it's, as it's related to the boardwalk and going back to our original funding proposal, it's, you know, I believe it's the $203,560 that I noted.
Okay.
Anna, is there any money now?
Wait a minute. June, you can't speak. This is not public delegations. I'm sorry. Is this just?
I'm waiting for questions, Dan.
Yeah, you can't, I'm sorry. This is a Board of Selectmen meeting. It's not open to the public for comment. I'm sorry about that. We had that public delegation at the beginning of the meeting. So we'll be having to answer your questions offline at some point and be happy to do that to get some clear-cut stuff. I'm sorry about that. Other questions for Anna on this subject? Okay.
I'll make, I'll make a motion. I'll amend it to what, the one I have in front of me to the new figure. I'll move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $1,527,046.72 for the public safety facility project. Funds of source being from Storm Sandy and from Storm Irene and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This is in addition to the $5 million previously authorized in bonding for this project. And I'll note that I didn't specify how much from each storm because I'm sure the two figures that are in the motion provided to me have changed. But the 1.52704672 is accurate.
Thank you. Sure, seconds?
Second.
Dan, seconds. Let's have some more comments and statements, if you will, on this. If there's anything out there, any comments?
Yes.
Yes, Roseanne?
Yes, I'd like to. Yeah. So I think that in reflection, because we heard so many mini reports on the project and the progress, I think that what was clear to us perhaps wasn't clear to some of the people that were sort of tuning in later, so to speak. But I do not feel that there was any attempt in any way to create any kind of subterfuge. I think the Police Commission was very open in responding to any questions, going back to the table and discussing things that we brought up. And so any lack of information or lack of clarity, I think it, we just, I think it just didn't occur to us because we, we knew. So I feel very confident that in presenting a clearer picture perhaps to some of the people who've sort of come on board later, I think is appropriate and report to the Board of Finance. And again, I commend the people who worked so hard on this, on the commission and also people in Town Hall who put in extra effort as well. So in thinking about this, you know, we had the advantage of having the Dominion Building for $1 a year for 15 years. And in those 15 years, we should have been savvy enough to set aside money each year to go towards what we were going to need to provide a proper facility for our emergency management folks. I think our bonding costs right now are relatively low. As far as the FEMA money, that money was given to us because of our need to respond to emergency situations and a crisis situation. And I think the use of that money for the new emergency management building, which will coordinate and consolidate our emergency services, which will allow us to better respond, more rapidly and efficiently respond to future emergencies, is an appropriate use of that money. Waterford, yes, right now we know what the fee is for use of that facility, but that's not, that's not a standard fee. We have to renegotiate that. And that contract is coming up fairly soon. I doubt that they're going to want to extend the same courtesy to us, which was supposed to be a short-term arrangement, not long-term. And I think that it's, I doubt that they're going to come in and say we can, they'll allow us to use the space for less money. So I think it's pretty safe to say it's going to be a hike in the cost if they even are willing to continue to share the services with us. My understanding is that they are becoming crowded and need space as well. So for me, I think, as I've said before, let's do the job right. Let's get people in there. We've got the equipment here. At one time, we've got the disruption. We've got the public, you know, tuned into this now and to the project and the necessity for it. And to keep this stirred up for the next 10 years by piecemealing things out and trying to come up with the money for it, I think just creates more dissension, division. I think it's time for us to come together as a community, do the right thing and get this building, get our emergency management services into this building in a proper and safe environment to do the job what they're supposed, which they want to do. And that is to provide the most important services to our community. It's not just a police station. It's emergency management, all of the services. And we can't have people running all over town to this spot and that spot trying to do the job that, that needs to be done. So I am fully in support and I hope the rest of the board will continue. I hope this will be a unanimous decision tonight, again, that we go back and ask the Board of Finance to help us do the right thing. That's it.
Thank you, Roseanne.
And just to add really quickly before we finish up, Mark, and vote, I think Dan Price brought up a good point last time we had a meeting with the new legislation for police accountability. There might be some requirements for things like holding cells and, you know, things in the police department that might be required. So I'd hate to get even further behind where we need to be by not doing what's right right now. And that includes putting in the Sally port, the holding facilities and so forth like that, and dispatch and the other emergency management services as well.
Yeah, the police accountability bill, I know the chief's listening in. I owe him a phone call from like late last week, but, you know, I was making my head spin of, you know, some of the requirements that each municipality is going to be required to provide a level of training, but equipment and servers and backup and body cameras and all this certification that's coming down the pike as well. Yeah, we're not, you know, this police accountability thing, maybe will serve the citizens well. Maybe, but it will also cost the citizens plenty. And we have to keep that in mind and part of those requirements to have a proper facility. Listen, the Board of Selectmen's responsibility is to look for the, what would benefit the town, the entire town. We look, we look decades forward and saying what's best for the town. And time after time after time, this Board of Selectmen bipartisan and unified has voted unanimously to move this project forward, to solve this problem that's been existing for 15 years. And really, they've been talking about it for decades of proper facilities. We have, we have the solution. We bought the building on a two to one vote at a referendum. Taxpayers said, go on, buy this building. This is, this is going to work. It's a lot better than buying a, or building a big new one and double the cost. If not double, certainly much more money and certainly much more time to put together a new building, et cetera. So, so here we are. We're there. We have $5 million that was appropriated. We bought the building for $3 million. We have $200,000. We have this 1.5 and change. And we'll vote on that and then we'll talk about whether we're going to finish this building now or leave it for our kids to finish, or at least the next generation of selectmen, if you will, to finish and whether that makes sense or not. This 1.5 combined with the $2 million we have appropriated already will enable us to get the project started. We'll be able to award the bid and say, here it is. And then the extra financing required, which if we're taking off too, so it looks like we would need up to $700,000 more in financing to finish off the Sally ports, if you will, and the jail cells and all that goes along with prisoner processing. That's an add-on into the contract anyway, Paul, right? It was a Sally-
It's not an add-on. It's in the base price. It's a, it was a deduct if we decided not to do it. It is in the bidded price for the project, the 7.2.
So it still sits out there separately?
It can be removed from the contract with the contract, with the vendor, but it is in the base price of the $3 million.
Okay. All right. Very good. So let's, we have a, we have a motion on the table for 1.5 million unless there's any other comments from the Selectmen?
I just, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. You know, from a transparency standpoint, I was fully prepared to once again address the category of items that were omitted from this project at the Board of Finance meeting. Unfortunately, we all know it was a very long meeting. That information was presented late. I have addressed it before. The Vision Committee addressed it, so no intended purpose to keep that from the public. And I will go over it line item by line item in front of the Board of Finance. Regarding the motion that's on the table, this is an opportunity to save the taxpayers' money, to save us interest on borrowing additional money to allocate the FEMA money. It's, it's a good opportunity, giving this town its emergency response personnel a fully operating functional building is what the goal has always been by the Vision Committee. We did not receive pressure to keep it at the $5 million budget. Many times in our Vision Committee meetings, I personally stated, you know, supported by the Vision Committee, we would recommend what was needed for a fully functional and operational facility and that the cost was going to be what the cost was when we got our bids in. There was no pressure put on anyone on the Vision Committee to bring a project in at $5 million and/or $6 million. That's why we came forward with the recommendation of the project at 7.2 million, because it gives our emergency responders what they need to efficiently and effectively serve the taxpayers of Eastline. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, we heard all sorts of stories like that too. Listen, I think the Vision Committee had, by the way, another bipartisan, several different groups coming together, a group that met 40 times, both in the Town Hall and then they had field trips to different places to look at other police stations, et cetera. So, you know, I've heard bits and pieces from meetings all put together, but out of context, it becomes misinformation. It becomes half a truth. It becomes not part of the entire package of stories. So thank you for clarifying, yeah, I'm, you know, the price is the price and the, and what you folks came up with independently on the Vision Committee. There were 12 of you, I think, plus department heads. You did that with the taxpayers in mind, with the citizens in mind, with the police in mind, with the best facility would be. And no matter what we needed to do, without limitations, this is what we needed to do to have a fully functioning public safety building. I appreciate all the work that your members and you did. Any other comments?
Yeah, I do. It's Dan. You know, and I sat on that committee and enjoyed being a part of it. Our mandate was never refurbished as brand new. It was to make something that would be good and adequate and useful and functional for 50 years into the future. And we tried to accomplish that. We were careful with, with the things that we changed and recommendations that we made. The intent was only for the good of the town. There was no politics involved in that meeting, those meetings. The time is now. We're facing uncertainties in the future for a number of reasons. We need to have a public safety complex that will consolidate all of the functions that will be housed there so that they can be efficient, so that we can react to the unknowns that will face us. It'll be wonderful to have additional space on that second level. Who knows how we're gonna, what needs we may have with social distancing and, and people distancing in different departments. We may be very, very thankful that we have that space. This is the moment. It's been kicking around for so long. I hope that everyone can come together and, and do what I think is right for the town. That's it.
Thank you, Dan. We'll call the vote then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Are there any abstained? We'll show that the motion carries unanimously, 5-0-0. Terrific. The next item on the agenda, let me see if I can bring that up. Discussion of possible action, the completion of the public safety building project and alternative financing options. Roseanne, you might want to be the one that starts this discussion. You've been pretty vocal about finishing this project, doing it right. And I think that's, that's a subject matter here. If you're still with us, Roseanne.
I am. I am.
Maybe you can narrate some of how you're feeling about including the cells or including, or not, not, what do they call that? Value engineering the project down to a place where we're taking things out that will need to be done later, that we acknowledge that the price of this building and this project is 7.2 and we should fully finance it to that number. Roseanne, if you can pick it up from there.
Yes. As I said earlier, I think that to try to piecemeal this, we've seen so many examples of this in the past, almost every single building that we have, we've downsized to make it try to fit a specific number. And then we end up spending more money in the long run, plus not being able to do the job right from the beginning that we had wanted. And I think that it's, it's good money, it's just money thrown, thrown away. Instead of, as I said, when we had the equipment there, we had the personnel there, we had the specs. And let's also talk about if we only take, if we only get part of the money, you know, every time we go out to bonding, there's not only the money that's being borrowed, it's the expense of it. But also, it's always having people on edge. You know, it's all, instead of being able to move forward and talk about some other things that might need to be done, you know, this is always kind of, these projects that aren't done correctly are always, we're always trying to figure out how are we going to make up for it. I just, I just think of the high school. When the high school opened after the addition was open, then we were already short five classrooms. We've never been able to make up those five classrooms, you know, after the addition. So you've got teachers that really can't do the job that they shouldn't be doing because after every single class, they're gathering up their materials and running off to another room and trying to set up an atmosphere and set up a class. That's just one example. You know, and yes, all of our buildings, you don't just buy the building and then you never have to do anything else to it. All of the buildings require maintenance. Of course, there's going to be some continuing costs. So I think, I think that it, I personally think it would be irresponsible of us not to go forward with what we know needs to be done. That's it.
Thank you, Roseanne. To clear the record, it's $48,000 to rent holding cells and processing space and evidence space right now in Waterford. That goes up 5% a year by our agreement. There was a three-year agreement that they graciously extended to four. Should we go any longer than that, they were going to ask us to sit down and renegotiate that. That was a short term as been put out with a bit of sacrifice on their behalf to be neighborly and help us out. Yes, I would have expected, and I don't, I don't say a number because it is a negotiation. I want to represent the people of our town as good as possible. But I also think the good people of Waterford should be paying our bills. So we'll find the middle. We'll find what the common ground is. It'll be more than what we're paying now. We, we know that. We acknowledge that. They've acknowledged that as well. And if you just take the cost of the Sally ports, the cells, and all that goes around, goes into that, is that about 700,000, Paul? 800,000? Am I in the ballpark there?
810,000, I believe.
Okay. If you take 810,000 and you look at the financing for that over the 20-year bond, it'd be much cheaper than building the cells than paying Waterford 48,000 plus 5%, et cetera, et cetera, over the next 20 years. Even if the price stayed 48,000 without any increase, which we know isn't the case, it would be about the same price. So, yeah, it makes sense. So-
And I think we've also mentioned earlier the security issue of evidence. And any of these cases that go to trial, which fortunately, we don't have that many, but it only takes one to end up costing the town a lot of money or losing an important case. And I think that, that the ability to keep evidence in one place and we are, we're responsible for it. We should not be storing that stuff and transporting it to another town that we don't have control over.
Correct. Correct.
And Mark, just to be clear, that bid off deduct for the Sally port and detention cells was 810,591 and included 73,400 of contingency.
Okay. So if we didn't have any extra funding, other than what we've, we're proposing for the appropriation, plus what we already have in the, in the bank, we could take 800,000 off the cost of the project as a deduct and not have the cells built now. Of course, it would cost a lot more later on. And that's why this Board of Selectmen and the Vision Committee unanimously said, no, go with the project and go forward with, with the full project. Don't do this later. It's not wise.
And on that, and on that subject, you know, the public comment that brought forward the idea of delaying the Sally ports- delaying the Sally Ports and using the money from the sale of Main Street to cover a portion of, you know, whatever that property's worth on the open market, $500,000, $600,000, whatever it turns out to be, that wouldn't cover the current, today's cost of the Sally Ports plus whatever inflation. But that money could be earmarked at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to take care of these items that are going to need replacement five and 10 years down the road if we don't get low-set money or other grant money to pay for it. So that money would be used to help save taxpayers' money potentially, depending on how both boards act in the future when that money becomes available.
Right. Right. And that's been brought up, the sale of the Main Street building that is currently on my opinion. We buy, we move it into a brownfield program to remove the pollutants at the property, which has been identified already, that the police work at right now, by the way.
Also, Mark, you know, this police accountability bill has just been passed. There may be some funding attached to that that may come our way in order to help us meet the requirements, the stricter standards that are there. You know, that hasn't really been discussed by the legislature yet, but it's very possible that there will be, by application, some grant money available, especially to smaller communities such as ours, especially if we are trying to, in good faith, meet the new criteria that's expected.
The other thing, am I, can you hear me?
What?
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
It's simply, it's the right way to do it. You don't build a police station without holding cells. It just doesn't make sense. And the other things, the liability of transporting a detainee into another municipality, traveling down Route 156, Route 1 into Waterford, and then when you're transferring that individual to their custody, if something happens, you can count on Town of Eastline being sued, even if it's not our fault, and if it's Waterford's fault or their negligence, we're going to be on the hook. And you can't calculate those risks or the costs that could cost the town. And then on chain of custody of evidence, you know, I've tried criminal cases. I've defended people in criminal court, and I know one of the first things you look at is trying to keep evidence from coming in. And if there's a chain of custody issue, any decent defense attorney is going to seize on it. It's going to keep that evidence out, and you don't want to be the police department that screwed up a chain of custody on a serious case. And, you know, we've had some very serious cases in this town. We've had a number of murder cases. So we can't be screwing around with chain of custody issues, and we got to do it right. That's all I have to say about it.
I agree.
If I could just add too, you know, as everyone knows, I spent almost 30 years in law enforcement, and someone said, "Compare Eastlime's to any others you've ever seen." There is no comparison. Eastlime's is the most inadequate facility I have ever seen a police department trying to function in, in 30 years of law enforcement work. To not equip them fully would be similar to not putting up the new smart boards they have in schools, or, you know, or not having security at the doors anymore, or something along those lines, too. We have an opportunity now to finish this project to the best of our ability with the funds available to where they can move in. They'll be able to house their own prisoners when necessary. They'll be able to process them there. Even if we're not holding someone right now, if it's a DWI arrest, or just to simply process and release, they have to go to Waterford. And now, if it's in our own town, you do it, it's much easier to take them and, you know, get them processed and released. With DWIs, you have to hold them four or six hours depending upon until they're capable of being released. Now, we don't have to have an officer go back out of town to release them when this happens. So I'm fully supportive of doing it right. You look at what we have done. Our Town Hall, even the architect who built it said, "The basement, the lower level where we have so many departments now, was strictly meant for storage." Why do we want to continue to make the same mistakes by not doing it right now? Bonding costs are as low as they'll probably ever be, so I'm fully supportive of finishing the project and the full amount for the jail cells, dispatch, emergency management, and the detention Sally Port and the cells.
I'd like to also mention the library. The library has been, for the past at least five years at a minimum, crying that they need additional space. And why is that? Well, we built a nice building, but in fact, we didn't build to the original design, to the original request. There was supposed to be additional room there. There was supposed to be storage in the basement. Instead, to save money, built on a cement slab, no basement, so no storage. It was supposed to be a second story. That was eliminated to save money. And as I said, almost every single project in town, you can see that it was built for that time period, but no real look to the future. And quite frankly, I mean, even with the community center, I mean, that's, what, 40 years old now? 35 years old? I mean, you can't predict how, who would have predicted 35 years ago the development in this town and the demand for services? I mean, I've lived here over 50 years. I never envisioned this explosion of growth within just the last, let's say, 12 years.
Right. Right. No, good points. I mean, the inefficiencies of some of those buildings are incredible, especially the library, community center. And that's right. They cheapened the project. They value engineered the project so that it could pass rather than building it that would last for decades and serve the needs for decades. And really, for the last 10 years, the library comes to me every year going, "We need more space."
Well, if I may, I didn't mean to cut you off. You know, having sat and listened for the last several years, I've heard people come in and complain about the shortsightedness of some of the projects that were done in the past and how we should have done it right. And I've heard that complaint over and over and over again. This is our opportunity to try to do something right, do the full project, not leave something hanging off there where we're going to be criticized down the road, and pointed out to us over and again that it was a mistake not to build the holding cells or the elevator shaft. So let's just do it right. I hope everybody can come together and get their head around this and try to do what's right for the town, and do the full project and get it done so we can move on to solve other problems that we need to focus on and we need to solve.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Roseanne. Paul, Kevin, for your comments as well. You know, there's, I don't know if there's a prepared motion, basically, especially with the late hour adjustment...
Well, I think we have to, Mark, I probably have to have a resolution being a little more specific, because what we'd be going back to ask for now is the difference between what we have, what we just requested tonight with the theme of money, and what we need to ask. So probably Anna might have a better idea of whether we can do anything tonight or we need to prepare some other type of motion.
So if the intention of the board would be to recommend increasing the amount of the bonds, then we would need a new resolution. And when dealing with a resolution, we have to make sure that we have it properly available for residents to review in advance of a meeting. At this point, if we were going to entertain bonding, we would deal with a new resolution, and the new resolution would include what we wanted to increase the bonding by, and it would also include language to rescind the resolution that this board had approved at a previous meeting to increase the bonding by $2.2 million. So it would be like an all-inclusive, updated resolution.
In the meantime, we could have a motion that forwards our intentions to the Board of Finance into the public that we want to fully finance the project to the $2.72 million, the difference being a bond resolution for a time.
If we're going to have to meet again on the bond resolution, do we really gain anything making that motion tonight?
And actually, that motion is out there right now, because our last one does move the entire project forward. Now we need to, and the minutes will also reflect that, you know, we discussed it and want to move forward. Without a prepared motion and with a little more specificity, I'd like to just wait until we can do the resolution at our next meeting.
Now, we're not going to bond about $7.2 million, are we?
No. Rough math, if I can speak for Anna, is the additional bonding amount would be in the $658,588.28, if you subtract the 1.5 million and change from the 2.2 that we started with.
Okay. All right.
I think we should just take a step back, table it to the next meeting. Let's get the resolution done the right way.
Yeah. Let Anna talk to get it through bond control and a good resolution that everybody's comfortable with.
Well, at this point, we have the appropriation for $1.5 million that we'll forward to the Board of Finance for their consideration, and at a later date, we'll come together with the rest of the financing package. In the meantime, the 1.5 and the $2 million we have, we'll be able to award the contract with a deduct initially, and then hopefully, if we can put our heads together, that we're all on board on solving this problem and finding the solution and finishing the building properly, we can add the cells back onto it. So that's it. So it seems like there's a consensus to finish this project and not let it sit half-done, which is a good thing, in my opinion. So we'll, really, that is all we have on our agenda this evening. I think healthy discussions, I think confident and positive discussions happen tonight, and I thank you all for your participation. And I will let the Board of Finance know that you're sending that appropriation to them. So that being said, I guess we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm owed by Kevin.
Second, Dan Cunningham.
Thank you all for coming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.